I don't think you will. I'll tell you why.
Is he gonna upgrade it?
Great, sure. Why, so why do it?
That's great, that's what I look at.
Waste, waste.
So, no, no.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order, please stand to salute the nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before this evening's meeting, we held a brief executive session to consult with our attorney related to the Connor Samuel Wellpad. In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Fleer, and Darlene Barney. In addition, township manager Don Genuso, Jack King, Director of Planning and Assistant Township Manager, Sean Bukavinsky, Chief of Police, Bill Bodorf, Director of Public Works, Fire Chief Noel McMillan, Engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers, and Township Solicitor Attorney Gretchen Moore. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General comments, I'm sorry, general township comments or questions will be addressed before the close of the meeting. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Pavilion Rental for Non-Residence is Friday, March 11th, 2022, beginning at 8:00 a.m. Cecil Township Historical Society will hold their monthly meeting on Wednesday, March 16th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the meeting room of the municipal building. The Spring Craft and Vendor Show will be Saturday, March 26th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Cecil Township, VFC number 3 Fire Hall 3351, Millers Run Road, Cecil, PA. Thirty dollars for an eight-foot, there's over thirty-five craft and vendors, and thirty dollars for an eight-foot table. Don't forget, there's an Easter egg hunt coming up on Saturday, April 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Registration will be posted in the Cecil Community Parks and Recreation page on Facebook and on the township's website. The event is open to Cecil Township residents ages 12 and under. There will also be a fishing derby on Saturday, April 30th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. The event is open to Cecil Township residents only ages 3 to 12. Registration forms will be posted in the Cecil Community Parks and Recreation page on Facebook and on the township's website at the end of March. We'll move on to discussion items at this point.
So, the first item on the discussion agenda is that Dawn received a request from Minard &amp; Sons, which is a business out on Georgetown Road. Their location is approximately, just highlighted here on a township map. This is the Minard operation, this is Georgetown Road, and this is Baker Road. They submitted information regarding a request for receipt from the local delivery aspect of the ordinance that was dispassed. The recommendation, at least from our office, was to understand at least what the trucks that would be using the road. And I did talk to Mitchell Minard today, and he said that there are four to six trucks per day, that some of them go out this way to Georgetown and to Mayview, but some of them would, or they have in the past, use Baker Road, but they've not been using Baker Road since it's been posted. So, this is above Dawn and I's pay grade to make a decision on, that's why we brought it to the board. Not asking you to make a decision tonight, but just bringing it to your attention. They did provide information from their side as to why they believe that they qualify. I don't have a position one way or another providing information to the board.
Dan, what's the weight of these trucks, you know?
They do, they don't, they don't push full weight limit, Frank. They have two tractor trailers, of course, they have to deliver some larger pieces of steel. They do, I believe they do structural steel, and they fabricate it here. They, they don't run the full weight limit, but they do run tractor trailers, and then they do have some smaller trucks for smaller deliveries.
Sean, aren't they permitted to make local deliveries?
They're, they're not allowed, they would, they would be eligible for local delivery if they were on Baker, but they're not on Baker. Yeah, that would be a, you know, it'd be a given, but that's, again, you know, the request was made and we're just bringing it to the board's attention.
So, so there's no formal, that's why I was just asking Gretchen, because there's no formal vote that would be required to make this change? It would be done administratively should we decide to do it? Are you just pulling the board and bringing it just so that we know kind of what's going on?
Again, you know, I, I, again, Dawn and I didn't feel comfortable with making the decision. We wanted to bring the board's attention. And, you know, because it'll ultimately come to you guys anyway, and if, if they just take a straw, poll with the board, and we'll, we'll react appropriately, that's how I think it needs to be done.
So, I think at this point, that's, do you want to talk about it now?
No, no.
So, I was just gonna say, why don't you sometime this week, send Dawn an email and let him know what your thoughts are on this? And then Dawn, once you hear from all the board members, if there's a majority, then you can let them go ahead and do that. And if there's not, then you can just let them know that unfortunately, there's not a majority that are in favor of making this allowance. Is that okay with all the board members?
Yeah.
Okay, so don't forget, put it in your calendars that you have to email Dawn and let him know what you think about this. Thank you, Dan.
So, the next item is a request from Cool Valley. I did get a call from their consultant, GAI, last month, it was, it was in February. They were making application for a joint permit for the project to grade the property. We had received an application that's been in abeyance for a long time on the property, so they seem to want to get it moving further. The permit that they've required, that they have applied for is gonna take about a year to obtain. So, I don't see anything happening for at least a year. But as a part of their application, they requested that I give them this consistency letter, which basically means that I've looked at the stormwater and it meets the township's ordinance. It doesn't approve the plan or anything else like that. So, before, I told them before I could do, you don't have an application in, you don't have anything in, that, that I would need to review this with the board to make sure that the board was okay with this. If you are okay with it, we would require them to post an escrow to pay any fees that myself or the solicitor would have involved in this matter. But we didn't even want to go there, at, at least I didn't want to go there, and so I at least brought it to the board's attention. Because I'm basically giving them something before they've made application for approval. That's not unusual, totally unusual, all, all they're getting is, is a, is a joint permit. It wouldn't allow them to develop the property just, and I asked them for a, a letter, they gave me an email. I asked them for a preliminary plan, I didn't get that yet. So, I don't really have anything to show the board, except that it's still the same plan to develop the land that's located off of Morganza, closest I-79. And they're, they, they have one anchor that they want to put up there. They, they weren't at liberty to say who it was, and, and then they want to do some residential development. So, the project's still alive.
Do you, you have any idea when or how quickly it would be moving forward?
How quickly they would be?
Yeah.
I mean, theoretically, if they got their application in for the joint permit, and then they started the entitlement process with the township, I mean, they could be going in about a year.
Okay.
So, I'm just looking for the board's okay to, to cooperate. And I've given Liz a pre-development agreement. So, a lot of times what happens is people come in and they want us to do stuff, me specifically. There's no fees to pay myself or get this listener involved. So, we have a pre-development application now where people have to sign a pre-development where they agree. They give us money upfront, they pay all the fees that are involved. So, the township's not holding the bag on any of this, this kind of stuff, so.
I mean, you can ask her, I'm okay with it as long as they are gonna cover all 100% of the cost associated with it? I don't, and is everybody else okay with that? Do you want to say no? Okay, so there, it seems like the rest of the board's okay with that. So, as long as there's an agreement in place that covers all of your fees and all of Gretchen's fees, that's fine.
Okay.
Thanks, Dan.
Very good. The next item that I wanted to bring to your attention is the, the, the Pollution Reduction Plan for, for Millers Run. So, just, just a brief bit of background for the supervisors and for the audience. We're, we're under a permit in the township called an MS4 permit. That permit requires us to do certain things within a five-year period. One of those things is, is to actually complete a pollution reduction plan where we have to take sediment out of the waters, the water system, or, or the waters of the, that pass through the township in simple terms. So, a few years ago, actually in 2019, Pendot came to Dawn and the township and, and, and our office and asked about a project to complete through the township park. What they're looking to do is to do natural stream restoration, which consists of putting in like rock veins, logs, to, to protect the embankments of the stream. They call these other things mud seals, but essentially what you do is you take a stream that's being eroded, you know, on the, along the banks, and you, and you prevent it from being that way by installing some in-stream types of things that, that help, help the creek get back to its kind of natural condition. So, the value of this project that they want to put in is about half a million dollars. It would save the township, per the current permit requirement, about $225,000 if this is done. So, we've been riding along with these guys, and, and the deadline's coming up in about a year to get something done. So, we finally got an agreement from them and this plan, and that's why I'm bringing it to the board's attention, that it's, that it is still a reality, Pendot's ready to do it. But what it will require is work in the park. And it's not, it's, it's, it's pretty simple work, but it'd be work in the stream and along the stream bank, that would be it. Would have to figure out access and other things that would make sure that they would not do anything detrimental to the park. But I've been involved in a number of these projects now, and they actually all come out and look really, really good when they're done, because they do improve the quality of the stream. So, the benefit here is the township gets to take the credit for your MS4 permit. You don't have to pay anything. The only thing you have to do is you have to agree to maintain it once it's installed. So, really, the next steps in this, they want the township to enter into an agreement. We have a copy of the agreement, we need to get it to Gretchen, get it out to the rest of the board. It, it's, it's pretty simple agreement. It just basically holds the township responsible for the maintenance if they install it. And then they want a conservation easement to be established along the creek. Well, the conservation easement is really already there, because you can't do anything along the creek or within 50 feet of the creek. So, making an easement over top of it is, 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 is really, it doesn't have any consequences at all. So, I just want to bring this to your attention. We can just take those, the next steps, again, would be, you know, dealing with the agreement and, and further looking at this plan. We've asked them for final plans, they've not given us final plans yet, this is all we have at this point.
Dan, who's gonna do this work? Pendot or Cecil?
Pendot, no, 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 Pendot would pay for, Frank, they would actually put it out for bid. And they would, they would pay a private contractor to put it in. There's people that's kind of specialize in these projects. They're sort of ecological restoration projects, and there's people that run around, that's all that they do are these types of projects.
It may help, but I think a lot of our problems are upstream. Like, we get to surge your water down through our park in these heavy rains, I mean, it's coming from someplace else.
Sure. I mean, it's, Millers Run's a huge watershed, I mean, it's thousands of acres, you know, behind, even behind here. But, but the idea is that, you know, over time, streams, and, and whether some of these things were done to the stream man-made or not, but, but what they do is some of these things cut down the velocity as the water comes through the stream. So, there's, there's like deflectors in there, and there's rock veins, and these, they use root balls, and all these different types of neat, natural things that kind of control the flow of the water so that it doesn't erode, erode the banks of the stream. And, and you know, you, you don't lose any more of your park either, because, you know, without when it erodes, you, 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 you lose usable land.
Bill, are you okay with maintaining embankments? The rocks?
Several years ago, we went to visit a demonstration project that Pendot, Cal U, and DEPL participated in up in California. The big benefit to it was the embankment stabilization. We've got a severe erosion problem going on over here in the park. One of the features of the embankment stabilization is to use natural hickory logs. They push those into the embankment to stabilize it. There's no rock lining, they found upon coating a rock lining. We've tried to minimize the rock lining that we do over here for that reason, because we've known about this project coming, you know. There's a number of different features that it, deeper pools that, that'll, that'll hold the fish in heavy rainstorms and stuff like that. So, there's a huge benefit, natural grasses, rock veins, as Dan said. So, once it's installed, and they do a really good job of the installation, I think the, I think the maintenance on it will be minimal. We're required to perform routine maintenance, or routine inspection, and routine long-term maintenance. So, with the routine inspection, you nip things in the bud before they get out of control, and we're already over the park working, so.
Okay.
Plus, we'd have to maintain it anyhow, even if we did it on our own.
We do, we have to, we have to maintain it as best we can without, you know, violating some of the rules of the DEPL. So, like I said, we've been trying to minimize how much rock we place along the embankments. We do it around our structures and stuff like that to minimize scour and stuff. We've been reluctant to go up, say, for instance, up near Pavilion 3. If you look at that, that's a severe case of, of erosion right there. And normally, this happens with all streams, where you have a deposit on one side of the stream, you have a scour on the other. Now, we've taken some of those deposits and moved them to try to, to keep that alignment, but it's beyond what we're capable of doing without a permit. So, and as a result, we're starting to lose some, some usable ground up at Pavilion 3, where there used to be a volleyball court. We had to take that out because it, it started to approach upon the court itself, you know. I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, thanks.
The big, the big benefit is that I have client, other clients are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on these projects. Pendot's gonna put all the money into it, they get a credit, and the township gets a credit at the same time. And then when we get to the next permit cycle, they're doing more than is even required. We'll be able to take advantage of it for the next permit cycle also. So, it's, it's even more valuable than, you know, than, than you believe. A lot of people.
Dan, could you speak to the limits? My understanding is the limits are from Glassill Road?
Correct, Glassill Road, all the way down, they show it through the MCC property, a little bit further down into there.
Sounds good.
It's a pretty good distance.
So, I, I just want to bring it to your attention, because it's not been on anybody's radar screen, and we'll keep it moving through the process.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
The next item is the LSA grant application. So, there's been a grant pull that has come up, it's about $130 million. It's a new grant from, through DCED. I spoke to the DCE, DCED person responsible for administering, or, or doing the grants here in our area. They're expecting a lot of applications, I discussed various projects with her. Her recommendation was to work on something that we don't already have in the planning process. As relates to public works, we're, we're pretty far along with the building and other things. One of the things that's essential, obviously, is the, is the salt storage facility. So, if you recall, our, our site plan for the, for the building. There we go. So, this is, this is the current plan for Public Works. This, this was the location delineated for the salt storage area. So, what, what we've done is we've at least went out and got a price related to this. The good thing about this match is, or the good thing about this, this LSA application is there's no match required. The type of facility we talked to Bill about doing is pre-cast walls with like a tensioned, it's a, it's a fabric roof on it. It's something that, it would be very efficient, the shape is good, and so forth. So, we're just asking the board, and I, I apologize for putting this on your regular agenda, but we didn't have much time, it's due on the 15th. So, we've, we've asked the board to approve the resolution for making the grant application. And that's, that's the purpose of it. So, the, the amount, I don't have it at my fingertips, but it was somewhere in the range of $600,000. So.
And you said it's due on the 15th?
It's due on the 15th, correct.
What size is this building?
Seventy-five by a hundred.
What, what do you have up here now?
Yes, so we're just, I, I think it's a great opportunity, it, I mean, it's an easy grant to get, to submit. All the planning work is already done, we just got a price, we submitted, and, you know, I think, you know, it's the right type of project to go for, and it won't, it won't affect what we're doing right now, it'll keep us on our timeline. If we get it, it can be something that can be added in. I'm just not sure when they're gonna come back with any awards on these. So, that's the reason, another reason why not to tie anything up in the current bidding of the township building, because we're trying to work to get that forward and make it through the timeline as quickly as possible.
Since that's on the agenda, we can talk more about that when we go to approve it.
Okay.
Go ahead, you can move on to five.
The last item is the, there's, there was a letter sent from Mike Stewart regarding the Public Works Project. Mike has requested that the township consider a change order for fuel escalation. I looked over the contract that we have on the project, I mean, we, we typically don't have fuel escalation in these types of projects. And I couldn't, I, I know we don't have fuel escalation on our bid specs, nobody could have anticipated what's happening right now. But in addition to that, it's not a Pendot contract, it's our contract, so it's really not in there. So, in my humble opinion, it would be up to the board whether you want to consider that a change order. There is a method for doing it, Pendot has a way to consider it based upon cubic yards of dirt moved, which we do have in the contract, Joe and I looked at that this afternoon and found out, we haven't found out all the information. But I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention. Again, there's no, no decision on that, being asked about that tonight. We just, again, wanted to bring it to the board's attention, we just got a call from Mike last week, and that's it.
Well, I spoke with Mike, he's burning 3,000 gallons a week, and it's up $2 a gallon. I, I, I really don't want to see him have to eat all of that. That's my opinion.
You know, I, I don't, I, again, that's why I brought it to the board.
I don't, I don't believe we should go for this, and we shouldn't allow any escalation clauses in any contracts in our township. Speaking with Chairman Fisher about this, nobody gives us rebates or refunds when prices drop on asphalt or diesel fuel, different things.
Well, the, the only thing I can, not, not disagreeing with you, Frank, the only thing on Pendot liquid fuels projects, when we use liquid fuels money on any of our Pendot projects, we have to include a fuel escalation clause, because it's 408, you have to follow the 408, the 408 allows for it. But this contract, you don't.
I feel super torn about the whole thing, I, I have a lot of respect for Mike and Stuart Contracting, but to Frank Agizio's point, to Frasier Agizio's point, nobody is cutting us any slack right now, because our costs are, so it's, it doesn't seem fair for us to have to bear the burden of increased costs for everything that we're doing, and then not, you know, and then give additional monies out because he's had hardship, I don't know. I mean, we don't have to make a decision right now if the board, Darlene, do you have any thoughts on it?
And he said to me that he would only ask for that during the movement of the dirt, the bulk dirt. The pipe work, he wouldn't ask for it.
I, I, again, I, again, I'm just, I have nothing against the request either, but I'm just saying from a contract standpoint, I don't think you have to do it.
Right.
It's really a decision whether you want to do.
Darlene, what, you were gonna say something?
Yes, I'm thinking that can we, can he cut corners somewhere else and not have as many trucks running or so on and so forth as far as the cost of the fuel and everything? The same thing is gonna go for us all the way across the board. Our police department, what happens to that budget?
Exactly.
Our Public Works, what happens to that budget? We're in a world of hurt, and we gotta tighten our belt, because where are we gonna get the money? We can't raise taxes.
Yeah, I think, let us think about it, Dan, and I feel for him, but Darlene Supervisor Barney's right. Like, we're all facing that same increase across the board, so we can't just hand out money because they are facing the same thing that we're facing. So, we'll think about it, but for right now, I would say we have, we need some time.
Okay.
Moving on to resolutions. Oh 54, 2022, consider setting a date for a public hearing regarding rezoning application 2021-0033 for Silver Creek. Location, Silver Creek Lane, McDonald. Requested change from R1 Low Density to R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District applicant Miranda Holmes. All we need to do on this is set a date, it seems like everybody's kind of busy this week coming up. What's everybody's calendar look like the week after? I know Mon, does, do Mondays still generally work for everyone? Yes?
Doesn't matter.
What about Monday, March 21st, does that work? 7:00 p.m.?
Did you say March 21st?
I'm sorry? I think there's only one item before you guys for that, so we could, may, and I don't think ours would take very long, so maybe you could go first and we'll go second. We'll, we'll share space. So, we'll set that for Monday, March 21st. Let's start that at 7:30 so that we'll give zoning hearing an opportunity to get their meeting done with. 55, oh 22, consider rezoning application 2021-0039 for Zero West End Drive. Location, West End Drive, McDonald. Requested change from R3 Village Residential to C1 General Commercial Zoning District applicants Roland and Lynn Gagliola. Planning Commission recommended approval on December 12th, 2021. This was the conditional use hearing that we heard, what was it, last month, before last month's meeting?
And you said the Planning Commission made a recommendation just to have the hearing? Is that what I just heard?
It said recommended approval.
Of having a hearing?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't, I don't think.
I don't think they would have recommended the rezoning.
You don't recommend a, the Planning Commission wouldn't recommend approval of the conditional use, because they don't hear it.
I know, I'm talking about the rezoning request.
Right.
Their approval was that we have the hearing, they weren't. They weren't approving that we, uh, approved the zoning change.
Right, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking.
Yes.
You just said that they recommended approval.
Well, that's, I'm just reading what it says. That's what it says on there, but yes, they don't recommend approval of the conditional use. They recommend that we hold a hearing. It's miss, it is misleading in the wording of the actual thing, but yes.
No, no, they're talking about rezoning, that, that's, this doesn't refer to the conditional use right now.
This is the rezoning request.
Oh yeah, you're right, you're right. So they wouldn't have recommended, no, so that's.
And they ultimately will make a recommendation if they, uh, entertain it.
Correct.
For a zoning change.
So did it even go before planning? No. Why did it go before planning? For what?
The only thing they could have acted on was to, that we have the hearing.
Right.
Not that whether we approve anything.
Right.
All right.
Okay. Are there any comments by the board?
Is there somebody coming to the podium?
I'll let her talk in a second, first, before we move on.
We're not voting on this or nothing, right?
Yeah, we can tonight.
I understood that we had a lot of questions, that, I thought we were waiting to hear more answers from them before we.
I think she's here. Do you have, you can come to the microphone.
Hello again, Jackie Cornoni speaking. Um, I actually did bring the flash drive. Um, I'm not sure if it did get presented to you guys, I emailed it over after the last hearing or meeting. Um, I can plug it in, it is a lot of information. I think after just simply stating everything, going back to what you guys do consider under C one with your ordinances, I do believe with, I mean, we're under five acres. So anything that would be a burden to the R three that is already existing there, that you are concerned about with traffic, anything going forward, like if Pugliano, Michael Pugliano decided to sell the property down the road, it's only going to benefit those residential people, um, homes. So I do have a list of everything.
How's it gonna benefit them?
How?
Yes.
Because everything that is approved by you guys under C one with all setbacks and acreage that we have already on that, you can't make the first one.
Well, you, you stated last time that the reason you would like to see it C one was when they go to sell it, they can get more money.
I spoke out of term and what I meant by bringing value to the property, we already appraised for what we paid for the property. The money's already there, not looking at it from the real estate side of things, but bringing the value to the property for its specific use. Um, to build residential back there is going to be very difficult. I mean, you have Stevenson Equipment right across the, I'm sorry, I'm very nervous, there's a lot of people here. But, um, you have them right across the street, or across the creek, I should say, that's an eyesore. So if anybody like Miranda or even a individual contractor coming in to do any more single families split those parcels, that's gonna be a lot of work and we're, like I said, we're only under five acres and only three of that is really buildable. But we still have to abide by the setbacks that you guys require. So how many homes are you really thinking to put back there?
You, you saying Stevenson Equipment is an eyesore?
I mean.
They're one of the neatest businesses you ever find.
I'm not saying that, I mean, would you, I guess that is an opinion, um, but for any residential home to be built there, I mean, there's not a lot of trees, there's nothing to really, I mean, there's a lot of industrial around you. So if you are a new development, are you going to take that into consideration? I would say yes, I mean, personal opinion. Um, like I said, I spoke out of term last time with the val- value of everything. We've already went through the sale process, we already have the value. It is what it is.
So let me ask you this, because it does sound like you, there was a lot of information that wasn't presented to us.
Yes.
Um, I don't want to spend a lot of time, but tonight, but I also don't wanna short you the opportunity to present to us because you didn't have your flash drive last time. I don't wanna say you weren't prepared, that makes it, that's not what I meant, but like, there wasn't, there wasn't the proper presentation. We can take the vote tonight or we can postpone this and we can, um, do it the, another night. So you could even probably come on the twenty-first.
Okay.
And you could do your presentation again, you could answer the board's questions and then it would be put on our, what month is this, March, April agenda for a vote then? I, I would need my other board members to approve, but to be fair to you, so that you do have the opportunity to show us a flash drive.
I mean, when it comes down to it, it is literally just the memorandum stating everything that you guys wanted from our application. What the property, the history of the property has been used as. Um, I think the biggest thing for me and for Mike Pugliano for what he wants to do, yes, his non-conforming use was granted to him for his storage and the HVAC and everything. But if he actually wants to move his business and run his office out of there and meet all terms of Cecil's board, he would have to be rezoned C one. So, and that is, I mean, you guys have a list of things and if it's going to be, it's not a planned, uh, hold on one second. Uh, planned even shopping center isn't gonna fit there. So like that would be high traffic for those residential R three people, um, that are currently existing there. It's go, I mean, and for the amount of work that Mike's putting into this building, if that ever were to sell, no one's going to deconstruct that building and take it down and start all over. It's just, I mean, from the real estate side of things, I don't think it's practical. Um, it's a beautiful building, it's a great lot to be.
Let me, let me stop you for one second, let me talk to, do you want to continue this this evening?
No, that, that's the point, that wasn't accurate what she said, that, uh, to do that HVAC business if he chose to move it there, it doesn't require to be commercial. The, the zoning board already granted them the, the rate as, as an equal or less business than he wanted to propose there, so.
Just for storage, I have it right here.
All right, so I'm just saying, we had all these questions to answer, before we even said I'd agree to have a hearing on the zoning request, we need to get that information that she has that we didn't see yet. I know, I mean, we'll get it.
I mean, this is kind of where, like, I thought everything would be, had, would have been presented. So for his, what the non-conforming uses, it's just for storage.
What do you mean, you thought this is where it would have been presented, at our board meeting?
No, I mean, all the information that I had given with my application. I thought it was already going to be presented for you guys to overlook.
Well, again, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to call you out as unprepared, but like, the, we were prepar, we held a hearing. We gave you an evening to present to us and there was nothing brought to us to review, there was no flash drive, there was nothing. So I think at this point, if I'm hearing you correct, Tom, I think we're gonna table this. I, I have to, again, confirm with my other board members and then we'll give you the opportunity to come and present and answer the questions again, and then it will be voted on.
I would one hundred percent appreciate that.
Okay, so is everyone, I'll make a motion to table this.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So you'll come on March twenty-first.
At seven, what time?
Come at se, there's, come at seven thirty, there's gonna be a presentation from Miranda Holmes. I, I don't know how long it's gonna take, so I don't know what tell, what time to tell you to come, but we'll do both at seven thirty.
Print out a few copies if anybody was.
I would say come prepared that evening. Come prepared that evening with your flash drive, with your papers, with the stuff that we need to see that evening so that we can look through it at that point in time and, and hear you out, and then we'll take a vote in April.
Is there anything specifically that you guys are really looking for that can?
I don't have my notes in front of me, but there was a list of things that we asked you guys for that evening that we kind of left hanging, so.
And all of that was, my only last thing that I really need to do is get something signed from those R three residents that are already there stating that they would not mind the change. I think that's the only thing I'm missing. Other than that, everything I have totally backs up the rezoning of it. I mean, I do understand it's spot zoning, but to push forward, use the property at its highest and best use, I believe I have everything to go through that.
I'll take a copy.
You wanna take a copy? I got it for you. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Um, oh fifty-six, twenty twenty-two, consider conditional use application twenty twenty-two oh 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 two for new home construction at twenty-one Muse Bishop Road, Cannonsburg, in the C two convenience commercial zoning district applicant Robert McCosky. The planning commission recommended approval on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, board members have any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Fifty-seven oh oh twenty-two, consider adopting the standard DEP resolution for the sewage facilities planning module for the Elish plan of lots. This planning module proposes on-lot sewage servicing to residential lots and has been approved by the Washington County Sewage Council. Location Tar Heights Drive, Cannonsburg, R two medium density residential zoning district applicant George Elish.
So this is, I just brought this through the board, this is the plan. This is one parcel now, looking to split this up into two parcels. Uh, one of about eleven acres, and another one, uh, another eight acres, I believe. So the planning module, they, they did the, uh, they checked it for an on-lot system. That's eight acres, the second lot. They've checked it for the on-lot system and it's all in order, so it's just a standard to do that. This hasn't been to the planning commission or been to you guys to be, uh, approved in terms of the subdivision. They're just trying to move along the planning module, which isn't unusual. So I, I don't have, it's in order for your consideration.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes five zero. Oh fifty-eight, twenty twenty-two, consider the Cecil Township Planning and Zoning twenty twenty-one annual report. The report received planning commission approval on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Everybody say yes, sorry. Passes five zero. Fifty-nine oh twenty-two, consider the approval of the development agreement for grading between SPB Holdings and Cecil Township.
Uh, this is the one that I reviewed with the board under discussion the last time. Uh, this is Tom Robinson's property, uh, that's located over off of, um, Morganza Road and, and along, uh, the South Point Boulevard interchange. Uh, so, uh, Gretchen has reviewed the agreement. I think it's in order, uh, again, this is for grading. If the board approves this tonight, this, uh, agreement would go along with a grading permit to be issued administratively by the office. We typically don't do these, but the, the ordinance allows for it for larger type, long-term projects. And I think it's a good thing to have in place, everybody knows the rules.
So the motion to approve?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. So sixty, twenty twenty-two, consider authorizing the bidding in the Montour Trail connection to Reserve Drive. This is the grant that we got, correct?
That's correct.
This is the grant we got last year.
Brings the, uh, the Montour Trail, um, up to the, uh, these plans are a little bit small. But this is the connection that brings, uh, this is the, the Montour Trail where my cursor's going in this direction. So we're bringing up a trail that's going to follow up, switch back because it has to be a certain gradient. Uh, and then it will take it all the way up to the driveway that Matt Alati put in. Maddo's, this is a sidewalk that's gonna take us up the Reserve Drive. And then there'll be two other sections of this to be built, uh, and bid separately to, uh, connect it, uh, from Reserve along Klinger and then a short person, piece of Klinger to take it over, uh, to corp, or a short piece to get it over to Corporate. And then it'll be into the sidewalk system of South Point, so it's been a long time coming. It took a long time to get this permit, uh, as every permit is anymore. But the permit's, uh, being typed right now and we'll be, we're ready to put this thing out for bid. So I'd say it's a good time to bid it if we can get it out. Value of the project's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the grant.
That's awesome.
Dan, I have a question. Where is it gonna cross Klinger to get up to the South Point? Walkways?
Uh, it'll come down Reserve, you know where the apartments are?
Yes.
And then it'll cross to the other side and then we'll build a, a bituminous, like a bituminous trail along that side of Klinger that sits down from, um.
The Hilton Garden Inn and the.
Yeah, that, that sits down from, uh, Crown, you know where Crown's headquarters are?
Yes.
It'll run along the edge of Crown's property and make the bend and go up to the intersection of Corporate. So there's three sections, there's a section along Reserve, or this section here, the second section takes it down Reserve and then the third section puts it on Klinger and brings it over to Corporate.
Okay. I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Oh sixty-three, twenty twenty-two, hold on, yeah. I'm sorry, I skipped that, oh sixty-one, twenty twenty-two, consider awarding the Coleman Road retaining wall project to Slu, Slu Sarchek Excavating LLC in the amount of ninety thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
So, uh, we took bids on March, uh, twenty-second, we received five bids. Uh, the low bidder was, I'm not even gonna try to say it, Cindy, you did it, you did it well.
Slu Sarchek.
I asked Frank before the meeting, if I'm being honest. I asked Supervisor Giezio, I'm like, I need help with this one.
So, uh, uh, it's a good, good bid, our estimate was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, that's what we were carrying in the budget, so it came in, uh, well under that. Uh, the contractor, Joe, has experience working with them on other projects, I've never worked with them, but he, he tells me they're good and, uh, we're recommending the award.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Oh sixty-two, twenty twenty-two, consider adopting the standard resolution for submission of an LSA grant for the construction of a salt storage building at the Public Works site along Klinger Road.
I'll make a motion.
I'll, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Passes five zero. Oh sixty-three, twenty twenty-two, consider ordinance two twenty twenty-two an ordinance modifying the UDO by deleting and replacing the sign regulations.
So I understand on this one, um, the South Point businesses had some additional concerns that now we're looking at, so it's not quite ready. I would recommend tabling it, postponing it until April, uh, so that we can consider their requests and see if there are any additional changes that need to be made. And, you know, if they're not significant, another hearing is required. If there were significant changes for your consideration, there would be another hearing.
I'll make a motion to table, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's been tabled. Oh sixty-four, twenty twenty-two, consider a contract with Bulldog Trees Service in the amount of sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for the removal of four trees affecting vehicle traffic on North DePolly Road. We've gotten several complaints, um, by residents who live on North DePolly about unsafe conditions. Ron, you went up and, didn't you go up and look at them?
Yeah, there's one that's, well, they're all very dangerous and they need to be removed.
Right.
And luckily for us, the, uh, residents living across the road are taking the wood. So we don't have to pay them to haul it our way.
Yeah.
My understanding is bills are gonna cut it in eight-foot lengths.
Thank you.
Did we take other bids on this?
We did.
Yeah.
We solicited from, uh, five, we got responses back in two, and, uh, Bulldog was the lowest.
Okay.
These must be pretty big trees, huh?
They're huge.
Oh, they're huge.
Yeah, we're talking. Four thousand dollars a tree.
Oh, that, they're huge, Ron LaSalle, they're huge.
Yeah, the one, one's very, very dead.
Yeah.
And I'm surprised that it hasn't come down like today or last week. And like Bill said, they're, they're paved right around them.
Yep. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero.
You guys better buy a chainsaw, there's a lot of wood there.
Oh sixty-five, twenty twenty-two, consider a one-year contract. Oh sixty-five, twenty twenty-two, consider a one-year contract with Fair, Fairfield Landscaping for turf applications at the three fields of Klinger Park at a cost of eleven thousand four twenty-seven fifty. Um, we were notified by, um, CMYSA who'd been doing, who has been doing this for the past few years, that they would no longer be participating. They actually notified Supervisor Cassiola, they didn't even have the courtesy to notify the township directly. Um, and so we're kind of up against a wall for one year just to have to take on this payment. I will tell you, I've already rented out, um, that field for one day in April, if this, we can have this conversation later, but this, if this, should this board be interested, we can more than make up the cost of this, uh, the cover of the cost of this should we wanna rent Klinger further than one day. Um, but we have no choice at this point unfortunately, because they decided to just stop paying.
So, is this for a whole year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, now, are we gonna rent it out at all and get?
That's the hope. I, if you're okay with it, and I plan to discuss that when we get to another motion in the future, but, um, and, and I can. But there's, North Sherbain rents their fields for a hundred dollars an hour, South Point Fieldhouse rents their field for five hundred and fifty dollars an hour. I already have extreme interest, um, and I can work with Jack on renting that out. We will more than cover the cost of this.
That three fields up there is that.
There's two usable right now.
Two usable.
Yeah.
One they're still working on, developing.
Yeah, it, it should be ready soon. It may even be ready this spring, but there's definitely two fields that we could rent out.
To clarify something though, I never talked to anybody from the, that league. Fairfield, uh, contacted and says that, that, um, the league said they aren't gonna do it anymore.
Right.
So I got the information from Fairfield, not.
I thought that's what I said, you're right, sorry. Sorry, I apologize if I misspoke, he did say that when he called, that the communication came from Fairfield. CMYSA did not even have the courtesy to let us know at the township directly, we heard from Fairfield. In the future, I would ask Bill to do this. Sorry, Bill. Um, but I didn't, we didn't wanna back him against a corner because it needed to be started next week. So we'll do this for one year. Sorry, darling, go ahead.
So we should re, we should claim, reclaim all this eleven thousand four hundred twenty-five by rental?
Oh, plus, yeah.
Should we?
The, the only thing about rental that, uh, make sure they provide insurance coverage.
Yeah.
For anybody that's there.
Yep, it would be required. Okay, so, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Sixty-six, twenty twenty-two, consider authorizing the solicitor to file a lawsuit related to the termination of the Klinger Park License Agreement if a settlement agreement cannot be reached. Um, that's what I was talking about when I said, right now we're locked in a deadlock with CMYSA related to their position versus our position of how the Klinger Park Agreement reads. They think they have complete control of the park and we think right now they have right of first refusal. Darling, you and I have talked about this, um, several times. They claim to use it every single day, all the time from, I know, from Sunday to Saturday. And I've been up there documenting over the past two years, um, where that's just not factually accurate. And the township has lost significant funds, um, as well as the future, as development, um, of the park over the past ten to twelve years. Because we've essentially allowed them to use it, um, rent-free. Uh, we don't do that for any other sports organization, we don't do it for baseball, we don't do it for softball, lacrosse, or anything else. Um, like I said a few minutes ago, North Sherbain rents their field for a hundred dollars an hour. Um, South Point Fieldhouse rents theirs for five hundred and fifty dollars an hour. We're not looking to make money, um, but we are looking to cover our costs and we are looking to do future development there that's been hindered by our current agreement and our current deadlock with CMYSA. Um, so that's why, you know, obviously this was a last, a last resort related to, um, where we wanted to go. We, we had hoped that talks and communications with them would have led to some sort of settlement agreement, unfortunately that has not happened. So that's where this is at this point. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you wanna speak?
Yeah, can I speak on?
Please, just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Crystal Gable, my address is one twelve Vladimir Avenue, Sherbain. I'm actually here with, uh, Cannon Mac Soccer Association. Um, just so you guys know, Cannon Mac has five hundred plus, uh, Cannon McMillan students that utilize that complex on a weekly basis. Um, with no lights and stuff like that, we can't be up there past dark, so we're up there during the day, after school hours, during the school. Uh, we have maintained the complex for nine-plus years with limited help from the township, which is required per the agreement. Um, we also have approved bid, um, of an agency to start corporate, uh, fundraising. We also have spent over fifty thousand in field treatment applications over the past nine-plus years. Same as what we just mentioned to be done by Fairfield at three thousand eight hundred and nine dollars per field and have never asked for any reimbursements or compensation by the township. Uh, we also have spent over fifty thousand in improving the park for soccer-related activities. We have pledged another hundred thousand towards the development of the park while we find corporate sponsors. Everything that the Cannon Mac Youth Soccer Association has been doing.
Where'd you spend the money improving the field?
Where do we spend the money?
Yeah.
We do the field treatments, we, uh.
No, no, the other one, improving the field, I'm not talking about.
Parking, the hillside, stuff like that.
No, no.
I, I'm aware that you were, like, I don't know how new you are to the board and I don't wanna call you out, like, specifically, but a lot of the information that you just rattled off has been disproven, um, and.
I have facts that, I have papers, I have everything to back me up on it.
We've seen.
Anything legal can go, so, you know, all this can be discussed between the attorneys and stuff like that.
We've tried.
Um.
We've tried.
We've also been, you know, trying to come forward and we've even asked for a meeting and never heard anything back from that neither, so.
Wait, timeout, timeout, timeout. So that's not true, so we held a meeting when, December, we held a meeting in December, um, between our attorney who, from Gretchen's office, Robin Eisen, and an attorney from CMYSA. None of your board members attended. I attended and you were there, right, Frank?
No.
Or, oh, Dan was there. Um, we, we were told by your attorney, and I, I don't wanna get into the details because of where we're most likely headed, but we were told by your attorney that you, that CMYSA believed that it was exclusively your field and that the township didn't have a right. I'd also like to point out publicly that, um, the township has offered numerous times to cut the grass and do the field maintenance. I have it documented from Mr. Glancy that you've denied those. I've also, I would also like to point out that we've been trying for years, literally years. Um, specifically, very hard over the past two to three years, but really over the past ten years, to get CMYSA to engage in, um, fundraising. We've even attended meetings at Crown Castle, which members of your board have refused to participate in. Um, I would also like to point out that you guys collect a fundraising fee of forty dollars per family from every child and you've done it all the way back to twenty thirteen, and we've seen zero dollars. And we saw your list of improvements at the park, which you count as weed and grass control and a quarter of a fence around the edge of the field. The point is, y- y- you've been allowed to utilize that field undisputed for ten years. We've repeatedly asked for members of CMYSA to participate with our board. As you heard me say, we've lost hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And you've collected, not you personally, but CMYSA has collected hundreds of thousands of dollars from their families to which you've given Cecil Township zero dollars towards the development of that field. And yes, there's the dangling of this potential hundred thousand dollars, but we've asked repeatedly for it. And we're told, here's a letter, wait, we're taking back that letter because it wasn't board-approved, wait, here's this letter again, okay, send us this letter, to which we've never gotten. So we've heard your talking points over and over again. We're done with the talking points. We met, we've met with you. We've always got the arms crossed, this is our fields you use with how we see fit. We're moving on.
We never said we wouldn't work with, it was in the agreement, if I'm not mistaken, that, um, anybody who rents the field or potentially wants to use the fields, we have to notify, we have to be notified as well as you guys have to be notified in order for that organization or, uh.
So I did.
Use that field or to run out the field.
So when I did run out the field, April second, I did send an email to Steve Glancy, Steve Porter, because they're listed on CMYSA's website as your president. I also sent an email to Cannon McMillan Youth Soccer at gmail dot com, or whatever was also listed on your website. I copied your attorney, I got zero response. You also have.
To that email.
Hold on, hold on.
To you guys regarding it. Um, and we were waiting for a response from you guys on that.
I did not get a response from anyone. Yeah, I didn't get a response to that. And I would also like to point out that, um, you've had in the past, not you, but CMYSA in the past has rented the fields out yourselves, to which again, you did not ask permission, you did not communicate with us, nor did you provide us any of those funds. And I can again prove that if you would like to.
Point of order here, I mean, we're talking about a motion that says that settlement agreement cannot be reached. Let's do that first, let's have that settlement, there should be.
We've tried, my, Tom, my point though is we've tried. We've tried. I don't know how many of your board members, like, we are done, like, you're just, we're just kicking this can farther and farther down the road. We've tried.
Says that when we're, uh, authorize the solicitor to file lawsuit at Klinger Park if a agreement, settlement agreement cannot be reached, that's what the motion is here, so let's just go through with that.
Well, apparently it can't be reached, Tom.
I would like to amend the motion to say. Because I wrote it that, or because Gretchen and I wrote it that way because I had wanted to, but the point is, like, you, like, with all due respect, and again, I'm not coming after you, like, our frustration is with CMYSA, like, and I don't know who you are or really who you are, but none of you have participated in any of the communication that we've had up until this point. It has been one individual who.
Hit you back on that. The one time you did hold a meeting in this building in generation with just us and yourself, I was at that meeting.
That's because I came to your board meeting.
No, that was your meeting that you asked us to attend.
I came to your board meeting.
We held it right here.
With your board meeting, with your board members.
Same with our boards, I was at that meeting.
Okay, so one time I came to you.
I personally haven't been at meetings because I have been at a meeting with you, personally.
One time in ten years. Well, you want it at public, yes, I want it on the public because I, quite frankly, I'm tired. Quite frankly, I'm tired of asking, we've invited CMYSA to participate over and over and over again. You have one individual board member who sits at every single one of these things with his arm crossed, this is our field, I started this. He refuses to participate. We are where we are because of that individual board member with CMYSA. We are done, my opinion, I'm done asking. We've asked over and over and over again, we are now saddled with a twelve thousand dollar bill that we weren't anticipating because CMYSA notified Fairfield that they're no longer gonna do field maintenance. Okay, that's fine, it's our field, we'll take it over, but then we're gonna rent it out to cover this cost. Because I am not gonna burden Cecil Township taxpayers with this bill because Cannon Mac deci- Cannon Mac Soccer decided they're no longer gonna do it. No problem, we'll do it, but we're gonna rent it out to cover that cost. Anybody on the board have a differing opinion?
No, I agree with you.
We gave you the opportunity, we invited your attorney here, he literally sat here, and I wish Gretchen isn't handling this, her office, Robin, but Dan, you'll vouch for this, he literally sat here and said, we get the, it's our field, we get the use. We said, that's the position CMYSA is taking. He said, yes, that is the position CMYSA is taking. We said, there's no negotiating about this. He said, no. Okay?
Move on.
Move on. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna amend this motion to say, consider authorizing the solicitor to fire lawsuit related termination of Klinger License Agreement. Is there a second to amending the motion?
Can I talk first? My name's Paul Marks, one twenty Broadwood Drive, I'm also.
What's your address, I'm sorry?
One twenty Broadwood Drive.
Okay.
Okay, I'm also Cecil Township resident, I'm not, I'm, uh, part of Cannon Mac Soccer Association Commissioner for our Route, uh, nineteen five five league, okay? I'm not on this, the, the actual board board. So any of these meetings that were held, I, I believe that we should have had the whole board, not just you and the other two people you're talking about, should have been able to be there, okay?
You mean my whole board or your whole board?
Our whole board.
I mean, every commissioner that holds a position, that has a voting right on this board, because we never were, okay?
Can I show you, I would be happy to show you the emails that were sent over and over and over again, and I'll just use his name, to Steve Glancy and Steve Porter requesting that your entire board be, be able to participate. I'll just put it out there. My brother-in-law until recently was on CMYSA's board. He was kicked off without notification and without ever being told any of this stuff. My point is, we've asked, we've asked. I went, I went over and above and.
Against the whole association over two people now. In fact, a lot of kids.
You got.
Okay, our season starts, we got that, that notification from you Friday, or whenever, about you renting the field. That's less than a month before our season starts.
You mean like the April second?
Yes, yeah.
Uh, because on Thursday, I found out that we were having to cover the cost of field maintenance. So I reached.
Again, these are things that, again, we.
So I did.
Our board together, all together, before.
What was your name, I'm sorry again?
Paul Marks.
Paul, with all due respect, we've tried. We've tried for years. At, to her point, I came to a meeting of your board members to try to talk about negotiations. I had another one of your board members show up at our meetings, he came to me, I tried to explain everything, he said he'd hear, I'd, he'd reach out to other people and I'd hear from him. We cannot continue to ask. This has been sitting out there for twelve years with literally no improvements. It looks no different for the most part than it did twelve years ago. We, I got.
I can speak to the fact that you're putting out a lot of kids in this community.
Darling, can you speak to that?
That's, that's, that's my.
But how could that, with all due respect, how could that possibly be?
Because we play our home games up there, Saturday and Sunday.
So you say that, you say that, but I, because of what was going on, I made it a point to go up every single Saturday, every single Sunday, and almost every single weeknight throughout the fall. Let me tell you how pleased my husband was with me about that. But I made it a point to go up there. Do you know how many beautiful Saturday mornings, or beautiful Sundays, or beautiful Tuesday evenings?
Not soccer season.
Darling, will you back me up on this? Like, Jer, but that's the point, like, from, some of them are from September, some of them are from October, some of them are from November.
Soccer season, there were, we were up there playing, there's.
I'm happy to.
Right.
So then you should, and I'm not saying you, CMYSA or the people that represent you, which you guys put into positions of power, i.e. the presidents, should have better represented you, and instead of sitting in our meetings with arms crossed, saying, this is our field to do with what they want, you should have said, hey, these are the months that we use it the most, can we have priority use during the months of September, October, and April and May, and we will work with the township to fundraise so that the rest of the community can use it the rest of the time. The point is, that is absolutely not what, not what hap, what has happened, and it is our field, and if we have to go to court.
Not the community's field, it's the board's field, it's the township's field.
It is the township's field, yes. It is the, it is Cecil, Cecil Township's field, yes. So I don't go to North Sherbain meetings and demand use of their field. And I'm, it is Cecil Township's field, yes, it is. It is our field, and we want, we have wanted for twelve years for our community members to use it. Not exclusively CMYSA soccer members, our community members.
With you there, but again, you're holding a lot of kids.
Then you know who you need to have an issue with, are your board presidents, who have held this, this information from you.
No, no, going forward with new board. If we get a new board on there, you're still gonna try to kick us out.
What, what do you mean, if you get, are you getting a new board?
If we can get new people, uh, on our board, that are willing to sit down and talk with y'all again, start a new conversation. There's just no point, you know, I think, kicking these kids.
What is the likelihood that that would happen?
Very likely, if we wanna keep our use of Klinger.
What?
Yeah, I've given, I-
You ha, how quickly, how quick-
So we can talk this over.
But see, here's the problem.
Saturday.
So we had, so let me give you a little bit of background information. So we had a meeting with, with potent, a potential community partner in, Dan, what was that, in April of last year? We were told that we would have a plan from CMYSA by the beginning of June, okay? So, beginning of June came-
Somebody on, on our board.
Your president, your board, your current board president. So we waited, beginning of June came and went. We didn't get any information. So at the end of June, I, after giving almost an additional 30 days for this plan, I sent an email.
See all this information?
Absolutely. I would be more than happy to show you.
Seeing all of-
So stick around after this meeting and I'll show you. So at the end of June, I sent a follow-up email. No response. I waited another week. I sent a follow-up email. I got an email from that individual that he was out of town and that he would provide something within the week. I waited another week and a half. I didn't get a response. I was on vacation myself. I sent a follow-up email. We're now at the end of July. I get an email from that individual that says he's, he's emailing me, keep in mind, but he's emailing me from a place without internet service. I don't know where that is in 2022, but he's somewhere without internet service, sending me an email. And he would have a plan for me by the end of July. End of July comes and goes, no, nothing. Beginning of August comes and goes, we send him a thing that says, "We're done. We're out. We've given you more than enough time at this point." He's, he types together, and what I would guess is maybe five minutes, a, a plan, a future promise. And that's the problem here. We are always betting on this future promise. This future, you know how many years I've been hearing about this company that you're hiring to, um-
This is the first offer.
Well, I can show you emails back to 2015 where you hired this company, and you know how many dollars we've seen from it? Zero. So the point with all of this is, we're not interested in a future promise. If you can turn your board over in a week and come to us with people who are really ready to sit down and develop this, like playground, pickleball court, the way that that, the way that it used to sit in our lobbying intended, we will have a conversation. Otherwise, we're moving forward with terminating the agreement, and we're going to do it ourselves. Because CMYSA, your presidents are, are okay with status quo, and we are not. That's what it comes down to.
Just realize how much it's going to affect the kids.
Yeah, another question, though, is, you got charged, every parent had to pay $40.
I'm one of those parents.
Wait, wait, you said 500-some kids, right?
I didn't say that, but, you know, I don't know those dollars.
The $40 was to go to Klinger Park. They spent it up there.
The email said, for the, I, hold on, let me pull it up. For the development, I mean, honestly, you're bordering on fraud at that point. But like, you're, hold on, let me find it. Hold on. Bear with me one second, and I can read you the email, the wording of the email. I have quite a few. I don't want to table it for a month. I want to move forward.
After.
I'll show you after, but you, CMYSA sends out an email and says that, hold on one second, that you are fundraising $40 per family for specifically for development of Klinger Park. None of us have seen a penny, so what are you doing with it? Because it doesn't come into the township for the deal. And we'll show you. Look, I would be willing to give you one week to flip your board and bring people who are willing to have, but we're, we've kicked this can down the road. We missed yet another, we missed yet-
Meeting, because I work out of town most times. Usually, I wouldn't be here otherwise.
So I'll amend this motion and say, "Consider authorizing the solicitor to file rele, relation to term, I'm sorry, lawsuit related to termination of Klinger Park license agreement, if settlement agreement cannot be reached by the end of next week."
Next week, next Friday.
Yep.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And drive a second to them.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. And I did, for the record, too, like, I did some research just on my own. Like I said, the rental fee is in excess of $900,000 that South Point Field House uses to rent their one turf field. We have two fields up there. So anyways, all right. 67, 2022, "Consider award of bid for the 2015 Ford Explorer for Simonelli in the amount of $4,102."
I'll make a motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. 068, 2022, "Consider award of bid for the 2006 Ford Explorer to William Kinder in the amount of $1,750." Wow, that's all we got.
I'll make a motion.
I guess it is an 06. It's an 06, yeah, sorry. In my brain, I read that as 2016, sorry. All right. Is there a motion?
I made a motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. "Consider trade-in of 2010 Case 580 Super M3 Plus Backhoe to Groff Tractor in the amount of $28,000. The unit was advertised for sale on Munisabid with zero bids."
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Passes 5-0. 70, 2022, "Consider the transfer of Cecil Township parcel ID 14007000000802 to Southbridge EMS." I want to add something to that motion, pending legal review or legal opinion.
Right.
Pending legal-
Pending a positive legal opinion.
Pending a positive legal opinion from Gretchen. That's just the parcel of land that their building already sits on, so that they can expand. There's no need for us to be owners of that parcel. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for that.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Congratulations. 071, 2022, "Consider a proposal by Toshiba for a 39-month lease for a 1HP XL3600 MFP large format printer at a monthly rate of $546.81. This proposal is a CoStarz contract item number 001055." Wow, that's expensive.
Um, can we look into cost of purchasing this? What's the difference?
Yeah, now, right, this is roughly $23,000.
Twenty, but in three years, we're spending $19,685, I believe, in a three-year lease.
That's correct.
And at the end of three years, we still need a printer.
Right. And it's generally because technology with the large format printers, generally, that's about what they're, what they're last, what they're, uh-
Does it include maintenance?
It does. It has a maintenance and service agreement with it, yes.
So then after the three years, we just go into another lease and something updated.
To a, to the copier lease, yes.
Um, consider, okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. 72, 2022, "Consider the purchase of two Ford SUV police vehicles for $85,570 as per the approved 2022 budget. This is a CoStarz purchase." It's my understanding, Sean, that these probably won't be received anytime soon.
Yes, through the chips and just the production. And of course, if we don't get them in a certain time, they stop production on all vehicles for 22, 2022, and we'll have to wait till 2023 if we don't meet that deadline.
Sounds good. I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. 73, 2022, "Consider the Board of Supervisors' minutes from the Monday, February 7, 2022, regular monthly meeting."
So moved.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. 74, 2022, "Consider the general fund invoices from February 1 through February 28, 2022."
So moved.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Quickly, before we move on to citizens' comments and questions, I want to bring up something that's been of interest late. I don't know how many of you drive on 50 from the four lane to the two lane, but all of a sudden, Penn Dot decided that, um, instead of merging left, that we needed to merge right. We had no notification, and by we, I mean Bill, Sean, Dawn, any of our board members knew that that change was going to happen. Literally, it makes zero sense. It says left lane ends, the left lane does not end. The right lane really ends, because the right lane's a turning lane. I have no idea. We've been back, Dawn, Sean, and I have been back and forth with Jason Ortizai all day and Penn Dot. And I can briefly read you what their response was, um, but it doesn't sound like they're going to change it. My suggestion was, or Jason's suggestion was, and I said it to Dawn, was that maybe we need to call them here, to hear from us, because quite frankly, it's going to cause an accident. You can't change 45 or 50 years' worth of traffic patterns without any notifications, and honestly, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So his response, and I don't know, this is an opening. All of my technology is currently frozen. Bear with me. Was that they got a complaint from a business on the south side of PA. Anyway, they got a complaint, and they said they looked into it, and that they, there were crashes. How they know that, I have no idea, because, um, they did not reach out to you, Sean. So they're saying, oh, here it is. They're saying that, so they said, "We got a complaint from a business on the south side of PA 50 in this area. They said drivers were racing to beat each other to a merge point and crashing in front of their business. There were crashes there, and they sent pictures. We took a look at it, and it's a layout that we typically have problems with. We called for signage and pavement markings, changes to clean it up and make it safer." Um, we've gotten complaints this morning, and we're responding to them. That's Dawn, me, and Sean. But I'm not willing to let this go, because quite honestly, their signage makes absolutely no sense, and Jason feels the same way, and I think everybody does. My intent is to ask them to come to a public meeting, but also, if the board's okay with it. Dan, can you reach out? Didn't Worcester do a traffic study for Silver Creek in that area?
Yes.
Can we pull that? And if that has any information, if not, can you have Mike Hayerman look at it? And then potentially have Gretchen send them a letter, because if somebody gets hurt, it's going to be on Penn Dot. Because it literally is the dumbest thing I've ever seen.
We'll get some information.
Okay. But are you okay, guys, with this, with having Gretchen send a letter, should we need to, to try to get them to understand that this is not safe or smart?
Well, somebody has to, because the way it is right now, if you're turning on Rising Road, you're in the left lane, and you're going to have to stop. And people are not going to stop. Somebody's going to get rear-ended. It makes absolutely zero sense. And if you do make the turn, you're going to be cutting in front of the car coming up 50. So they're going to stop, and they're going to get rear-ended. It's absolutely ridiculous.
It really is. It makes zero sense. So-
And on another note, just while we're talking about Penn Dot, uh, Jason Ortizai today and me negotiated. Penn Dot's going to be down here next Monday from DePauli Road down to the end of the four lane, and they're going to clean all the storm sores out. Bill's going to keep an eye on them, because we're getting a lot of flooding along that road.
Good job. Thank you. But in any case, we're not letting this go, because it's stupid and it makes zero sense. So I know I've had a lot of people reach out to me. I think Dawn, you've had some people, Sean, you've had some people. We are working on it to try to get it fixed, because it, I, I have no good explanation. And they said there's pavement markings. I've driven by there probably seven times today, and I didn't see a single pavement markings.
They intend to put pavement markings.
When? Like, three years from now?
I suggested that those should have been performed at the same time, or at least be preemptive with signs. Say, when you're changing a traffic pattern, you need to alert the motorist public. I mean, it's-
Well, Sean had his message board up there for at least about a month.
Right, saying to, the right lane ends, merge to the left. Now they've just, right, reversed that. I mean, I think it's-
It just makes-
Irresponsible on Penn Dot.
I shouldn't laugh, but it's really like, anybody who even like stands at that intersection realizes that makes zero sense. So I don't know what happened there, but we are aware of it, and we are trying to correct it. And now, moving on to citizens' general comments and questions. Jack, you're going to talk to us tonight? Come on. Surely you have something you want to say. Can you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, I'm Nancy Marshall, 45, Tomahawk Claim Lane. Um, I have a petition here, signed by 62 people who live along Rising Road. The petition reads, "A local developer, Miranda Homes, has asked Cecil Township to rezone the hillside above Silver Creek Nursery, so that they can build approximately 240 homes. Homeowners would exit the development on a new road that would intersect with Rising Road opposite the entrance to the Turnpike via Cecil Sturgeon Road. The increased traffic on Rising Road would endanger all of us who drive through the narrow railway underpass near the southern end of Rising Road. By signing this petition, we, the undersigned, ask that Cecil Township not rezone that hillside until there is a definitive plan to widen or replace the current underpass before any homes are built. That plan must include both specific dates and financing to complete the improvements."
Just so you are aware, that is something that came up during, we held a, it was, it was a workshop, not a hearing. But that, the intersection under that underpass, as well as the intersection of Rising and 50, were two things that were discussed with the developer. In fact, we told them, "Don't come back to us until you come back to us with a plan for both of those off-site improvements." So we had the same concerns that you did. Thank you.
Dan, you, you've looked at that, and you've looked at some different things they could do on the threshold there.
There are some opportunities to do some-
Do some relocation of the road to improve the site distance. Problem is, when you come through the underpass, you're blind as you're making, it's got a curve going through it. So there is, there would be some opportunity to improve that. Uh, we've heard that they're going to do something with the buttments, maybe, and do something with that bridge. We have to find that out. So, yeah, it's, there's some things that could be done, Ron.
Yes, but we've been looking at that. Penn Dot's been there. The Turnpike was there, and the railroad was there.
Whose expenses are going to be to do that, Ron?
It would be theirs.
Miranda.
They had her giving us $350,000.
Okay.
No, they're, they're surveying and planning. I mean, you're not going to see no houses coming out of Miranda's plan probably over a year.
More than that.
So they've got time to correct it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Ed Beatty, 22, Birchway, "How did we end up on the Patty Mallory situation?"
It's done.
Wait, we can't, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's settled and dis, it's settled and discontinued.
It's settled?
Yes.
I mean, so was it, was the suit dropped?
Yeah, there's a settlement agreement that the board voted on at the last meeting. That's a public document, so you can come request that. But both suits have been discontinued.
So the, the money that she was paid, she kept?
All I can say is both suits have been discontinued. If you want to get a copy of the settlement agreement, you can come and ask for a copy.
Yeah, I'll do a right-to-know for that, but, uh, do we know how much total money was spent legally on that situation?
I don't have a tally for that.
Excuse me?
I don't have a tally for that. But again, you could come and ask for a right-to-know, request for, for that information.
Okay, well, I'll get the information, and then I'll be back next month. And also, um, these, this PA system's horrible here. I have a lot of hearing loss, and, uh, so we need to do something about that. I've been complaining about this for 25 years.
You can't hear sitting in the audience?
No, I mean, when, when the microphone, I mean, just let's look at the, look at the positions of everybody's microphone right now. These microphones ain't that great to pick up voices like that. And I know I'm not the only one in this room that is probably hearing one out of every- that is probably hearing one out of every three words.
We can, I can be more aware of people speaking into the microphone. That's, that's my fault. I will.
I'm just saying, when you guys turn to talk to each other, forget about it. I, I can't hear anything.
Okay.
Like we said years ago, you should have had lapel mics.
We actually tried that. We tried that for a couple of years. They were actually worse than these microphones because unless you were sitting here with it on your lapel, holding it like this, you couldn't hear them at all. Or if I sat talking like this. But as soon as I turned to talk to Frank and my lapel mic was on this side, or if I talked to Gretchen and my lapel mic was on this side, you couldn't hear. We did, we tried them at a cost of what? It was like twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars. It was a crazy amount of money, but we did try them for a couple of years.
I mean, I'm just saying, I, I just think it's bad.
Sorry. I will make sure people speak into the microphone more. Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Marion Miller. Can you hear me?
Hmm?
Okay. I know some of the people in this room and they know why I'm here, I'm sure. I've been fighting this battle for a number of years now with regard to our property at 3240 and 3242 Miller's Run Road. Even though this all originated with the sewage project for the municipality, never had a problem until that point, the municipality has denied any responsibility whatsoever and has turned it back on the township and Pendot because it's a storm water issue is what they're telling me. So I'm here to, if you would like to take time to view some photos that I have of the continual damage over the years. Bill probably remembers a conversation we had years ago. I thank Ron and Representative Ortiti and Cindy Fisher very recently. I've approached them again and I think they've at least, I think Frank went down and took a look at the situation, but I've had no resolution. My family has lost everything that we have ever had in putting into that building to try to make a business in Cecil, but we have had no help from either the township, the municipality, or from Pendot. I've reached out to Governor Wolf's office. He has hooked me up with a couple of representatives in Harrisburg. And of course, Representative Ortiti has been trying, I think, to move forward to do something for us. At this point, I not only need the problem looked at and fixed, I need to have some restitution. I have one, one estimate of just cleaning it up and cleaning the inside of my building is forty-two thousand dollars. Now, where in God's name I'd get money like that is beyond me. And unfortunately, insurances don't cover water coming from the outside. They only cover like things that are broken and pipes on the inside. So I'm reaching out to the board to review everything that I have. And if they want everything, I have a file this thick from when I began this. And we put in a curb, which last, at the last meeting I attended, Gateway said it was never there. I have pictures of when we bought the building, when we redid the building, when we put the curb up. And Frank knows, my, my brother-in-law was in asphalt. He put the asphalt curb up in the whole front of the building. I have that picture. And I have pictures of after the work was done by the sewage department, no curb. They told us it was our responsibility to put a new pipeline in there. We paid thousands of dollars to have the whole front of our property dug up and a larger pipe put in there from the, from our front of our property all the way down to the storm drain at the end of our parking lot. And because we're low, we're the lowest building on that road, all the water goes to our property. And one thing that was done, I think it might have been Bill and maybe Pendot did put another storm drain in there that does absolutely nothing to control that runoff and that water coming into our property. It may do it for the houses up from us because they're, they sit higher. But that's all it does. It does nothing. Now, as I said, if you'd like to view some of the photos I have, you're more than welcome to do so. I did look in, I tried to read Cecil Township's storm management ordinance and I was getting ready to go to law school to try to understand everything. But I think it did say that it is the township's responsibility to maintain and correct any issues that involve storm water. And that's where I'm at here.
Dan, I don't, I don't have it in front of me and I can look it up. You went, didn't you go look at it or?
Yeah, there's, I'm, I'm aware of the situation and there are different ways that we could prevent water from getting to this building. I talked to them about, talked last month about the improvements at DePauli and possibly bringing a storm sewer down along, on south of DePauli Road and running it all the way to the creek. Because the, the stormwater system along Miller's Run Road is really just a hodgepodge of pipes and various things. Nothing's really in good shape. That's why Ron asked that, asked them to go out. The pipes are all flat. They get filled up with dirt. And, and then this, this property in particular sits below Miller's Run Road. So they're right in the bull's eye. I, I hate to tell people this, but I've experienced more flooding in all over western Pennsylvania and I represent communities as far south as Cecil, Cecil and as north as Butler. Everybody's having drainage problems because we're getting more intense rainfalls. Problems that might have been a problem every five years or a problem every year now, or ten years are a problem. So that's one of the reasons why you have to invest and put more money into storm sewers. I know we have a lot of projects and, and priorities on, on different things. But I think in this case, there, there might be an opportunity before we finish up there with, with DePauli Road to try to intercept some of that water before it makes the bend off of DePauli and gets down to the, to this, this particular place. And there's about an acre and a half of water that we measured that gets in that direction that doesn't have any storm sewer to catch it.
And we can do that with, without interfering with private property?
We would do it on our road. We would put a catch basin at the intersection of DePauli and try to capture the water before it starts, makes the turn and goes down. That's all we can do.
So let's try it.
May I say something at this point? That was Mr. Bordos' recommendation years ago to work in concert. We spoke with Pendot to put that storm drain there. It's not there. So my problem is, and my issue is, now I have all this damage. I have a building that has mold in it. I can't open my front door from the silt in the runoff that comes off of those roads. And I need to get some resolution and some restitution so that I can at least recoup and maybe try to reopen. You know, that's where I'm at here. I, I, I'm just desperate. And I, I did speak to Pendot and they informed me that the state does have insurance for this kind of thing. I would think the township does as well. I don't want to cause any financial disasters for the community. I just want what I feel that we are entitled to. That's all.
I, I don't think the township's responsible for your damage.
You don't?
No, I don't.
Well, the township was supposed to work on the runoff coming off of DePauli Road and the water. And that's where a lot of it's coming from, Ron.
Are you saying, though, the water's coming down DePauli or are you saying it's coming off of Miller's Run?
From DePauli, just not water, but silt too, from DePauli Road, a lot of it. I, I, like I said, I took pictures of that. And when it hits DePauli Road, it comes down onto 50 toward my property. And as Dan indicated, we are on the, we are the lowest property probably on that whole strip. So the water automatically goes to the lowest point. And that's where I'm at.
Part of the issue, give us a minute. We're going to talk to Dan, we're going to talk to Gretchen. Part of our issue, though, is that's a state road. So we are limited. It's private property and a state road. So we're limited on what we can do by law on private property and state roads. So to Dan's point, we can do something potentially on North DePauli, but we can't control the water runoff that's on Miller's Run.
But can't you work with Pendot in regards to these issues?
Well, you saw how well it worked when we worked with Pendot about the signage. So, and we asked Pendot. I mean, quite frankly, like, I wish I could say yes, but the answer to us, no. Like, we sat in a meeting with Pendot because the, as I'm sure you noticed, they do a terrible job plowing Route 50 and 98.
Pictures of that, too.
Oh, me too.
What they did to my building.
Yeah, me, me too. And we sat with them in a meeting and they told us they do the best they can. And they sent us a thing that says they come once every four hours and that meets their standard.
Well, like I said, too, though, I mean, Bill can attest to the fact, this isn't, this isn't a recent project problem for me, Ron, you know.
Pendot put a new inlet in, in front of Mrs. Kimes's house.
Yes, that's where they put it.
And the problem is, it's too high.
Yes.
The water's running around it and then coming down to you. That inlet has taken no waterless. It's a really heavy rain.
So this is where you need Jason Ortiti to talk to Pendot on your behalf to try to get that corrected. Because we can't correct something on Miller's Run Road. It's a state road.
Well, I understand that. As I said, I, I'm just talking to the two entities that I believe are involved here because DePauli Road is a township road and the runoff and the silt come from DePauli. And I thought the township was supposed to correct and maintain those issues, according to the storm management ordinance.
Can you give us, I have your information. Can you give us a minute? We, we will talk and see what we can do. I don't want to make any promises, though, because unfortunately, like.
Do you see any of the pictures?
No, you've sent, you've emailed them. No, no, I know, I know. I know where you live. I've read the emails. I've responded. Like, I know all that and.
Appreciate that. I, I've never had anybody respond as quickly as you, Cindy, so I'm grateful for that.
Thank you. I, I don't sleep well. But in any case, like, we want to do everything that we can, but, but please understand that, you know, us wanting to and our ability to do things by law are different. So let us like put our heads together and see what we can come up with and see if we can come up with a plan. And we will, I have your phone number, I have your email address. We can reach out and contact you and we will see what we can come up with.
Appreciate that. Do you think there's any possibility at all that the township can work with Pendot on this together?
I wish I could say yes, but unfortunately, my gut says no.
On them, as I said, when I spoke to the governor's office, they were very adamant about me pursuing this. And it gave me the gentleman's name, I think his name was Bill or Bob Kreisler, Kreiser, K-R-E-I-S-E-R in Harrisburg, who heads up that, that particular department. So his girl took my information and he's supposed to get back to me. So maybe, if you have to go up that high or do whatever, maybe Pendot will move forward with something.
So let me do this. Let me see if I can get a meeting between us, you, me, and Frank or Ron, whoever can be there, and Jason Ortiti and see if, and Gwen Rhodey from his office is really good. He's.
They're all going to be there Mon, Monday.
Yeah, Pendot will be here Monday.
Pendot's going to be there? Jason said he's going to be there.
Yeah. So let me see what, if we can get that together and then.
And Bill.
And then we'll, maybe we can, maybe we can get, because what we need is Jason to advocate for it. Pendot is not going to do what we're asking them to do.
Just answer me one question. Does Cecil Township have insurance that pays for issues and liabilities that are proven to be their responsibilities?
No, not really. No. Like, if you would sue us and we would, like, there's the potential that we could be represented by insurance counsel or something like that, but no.
You don't have insurance that you pay for to do that. But I guess the state does, but the municipalities, it's probably not affordable, whatever, whatever, you know.
Right.
But I just thought it would be something to check on.
I'm sorry.
They, they also told me, Gwen, as a matter of fact, she told me that if there are issues coming off of DePauli Road because of the development there, many times the developers have contracts with municipalities for this reason. They put funds aside if there are any problems that are arising from these issues, that that, the funds are there to make the corrections and pay whatever's necessary. There was a word for it and it, the word.
Escrow.
No, it wasn't an escrow. It was a specific word.
Let us look at it. I don't want to like commit to anything or say where the water's coming from or any of that. Let us look into it and I, I promise you will hear from us.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I think we need to look at Dan's plan and put that inlet in on that corner and take it down, whatever the name of that road is, Dan.
I'm not opposed to that, but let's, let's, let's circle back, Ron, and we'll see. Any other comments or questions from the audience? There's no other, board members, any other comments or questions? This meeting, oh, sorry, were you going to?
Yes, I have, I have a comment to make.
Go ahead.
Can we please have a moment of silence to recognize a longtime resident and advocate of local government in Cecil Township, Anna Cohen, who passed away on 228?
Push her microphone closer to her mouth. No, not yours, hers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.